Today's date is February 25th, 2025. The time is 10:00 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Eberline, Duncan, and Matari. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment? Hearing none. We'll move on to our first business item. This is a justice building update discussion with Building and Grounds Director Jeff Fuller.
Good morning Commissioners, Jeff Fuller for the record. I believe David Mendez is online, but I'll go ahead and start with kind of a general update of the project and then we'll jump into, I have a couple of representatives from Contract Design, and we'll talk about the furnishings and desk options, but we'll, let me go ahead and give just kind of a general update on the project. Project's moving along well. Timelines, we still seem to be on track for completion in June. Third floor, the carpet is complete, so most of the finishes are done up there. So I would say the third floor is about 90% complete right now, and they just continue to move down into second, first, and main level. Big benchmarks are the elevators and the overhead doors are going in this week, so you'll see some big progress on some of those major components going in. Detention doors were installed last week, and then we are working on one potential change order. We've discussed this a couple of different times where we're converting the fire sprinkler system from a wet system to a dry system in the evidence room.
Sure.
We just got pricing on that late last week. There's two options with that that we can go with, and so David Mendez and I are exploring that a little bit to make sure we really understand the two variations before we present that to you, but that'll probably be coming before you next week with a recommendation. But it's right around the $30,000 range with an option for, I think, a $12,000 upgrade to put nitrogen in the system, and we'll explain the details on that when we bring it to you, but we are getting closer to having the final numbers on that that we can bring to you formally. So that's kind of the general update. Maybe I'll just pause and see if David has anything to add on that, or if you have any questions about the scope of the project, and then we can go into the FFM furniture options.
David, are you on the line?
Yes, yes. David Mendez with Turner and Townsend here for the record. I was, Jeff has already mentioned the fire sprinkler system, that's a change that just came through, and I've been consulting with staff to see which route is the best to go. I believe the lesser expensive is probably the right way to go, and we'll present that to you and also leave that option available to you if you want to upgrade to that nitrogen system, but I'll have that on the agenda for next week.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions? No? Okay.
Okay. All right. So with me today from Contract Design, they are the company that we have contracted with to do our furnishings for the building. I have Tori Nelson and Gwen Gunzel, and we have, they've put together some options for you. There's basically three packages. Our highest priority right now is really selecting desks, so we can give them some direction so that they can finish pricing the entire package on desks and the accompanying components that go with that. And so at your request, we put together three different options from two different companies. The first company is called HBC. They're a little bit more of kind of a production style, you know, it's already built, it's sitting in a warehouse, we would order it, it would ship out. Global is the second company, and there's two options there. We've described in pretty good detail in your board packet the difference in construction. There's definitely some cost differences with that. We've talked about this for a couple of weeks now, and we're definitely at a point where we need to help narrow this down so that we can give them guidance on how to go, so that they can continue to price the non-typical desks, you know, including the judges' chambers, and then associating cabinetry and file cabinets and things that will go with this. So we've presented a lot of options to you, a lot of detail in your board packet, so really I think it's probably, oh, I do have a couple of samples here as well that I can show you. This larger sample is the HBC option, so that's the one that is a little bit more of just kind of the stock product line, and then not quite as good of a sample, but this is a little bit more of the MDF.
When you say the MDF, are you referring to Global Option Two or Global Option Three? Two?
Under Global, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but MDF is the substrate for both Global options.
Yeah.
It's the top surface that's different, being the thermally fused laminate
Yes.
or the high-pressure laminate, but the base structure of the substrate is MDF.
So you're just showing us a sample of the MDF, not the what's on top?
Well, the
The facade.
The larger sample is the HBC, which is a particle board, and you can't actually see the particle board in there because it's already fused onto it.
Is it thermally formed? Okay.
Yes.
I put hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of panels out like that.
Yeah, that one is thermally fused with a two-millimeter edge banding.
Pardon?
That one is thermally fused with a two-millimeter edge banding.
Okay.
So you're unable to see the substrate with that sample, with the larger sample. Yeah.
Okay.
Because it has the edge banding. The second sample is primarily used for like a color sample, but it shows you the medium-density board internally, but what is on there is a thermally fused.
It's thermally fused too. That's about all you can ask for.
So both of those options, it's not a good showing, but the thinner one, it will actually be the same thickness on the top, so it's not going to be that thin of a top for a desk.
Yes, thank you.
So I think what we're seeking, you know, is just an opportunity for you to ask any further questions, but then, you know, guidance on if there's kind of a level of this overall finish that you'd like us to land in so that we can give them the Go ahead, continue pricing and present a full package, you know, with all of the detail pricing that'll come before you.
Okay. Does anyone up here have questions?
A couple of them. What is the lifespan expected between the HPC and then Option Two of the higher quality?
Well, both are limited lifetime warranties, so it's kind of up to the manufacturer's discretion on the wear of the product. Based on the construction alone, though, something like a high-pressure laminate is going to increase the longevity of the wear and tear versus something with a substrate like particle board that is more susceptible to wear over time, as far as that timeline goes, I mean.
It's hard to say.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, it's, are the users going to be moving the desk, dissembling them, moving them a lot? Probably not, and so in that case, they're probably both going to stand up very well. It's just how destructive can somebody be with it?
Can I put my two cents in?
Yeah, absolutely.
So this material right here is what we're talking about, and so this, you can see how it's held up so far. If you use a good product and it's not some cheesy product, you'll have lifespan probably about like this.
And this is the HBC option?
I don't know what HBC is.
Well, the particle board
HBC is the name of the company.
Pardon?
Right.
So the particle board with a laminate?
Yes, and it's like, it's like vermicah, and vermicah's pretty darn good and strong.
So repair-wise, will our Building and Grounds Department be able to repair any of the choices equally?
My question is repair, can you define that better? Because if it's, think about kitchen counters, bathroom counters, that kind of thing, or even the break room that might be here, for example. If it's chipped, it's chipped. It's, but if you have, the edge is actually a vinyl, so it's not going to be the same self-material on the side, so that's going to help with the wear and tear over time, but it's just like your kitchen, you're not going to be able to repair either option.
Okay. Jeff, did you settle on, or do you have a recommendation?
I mean, I think, I think overall quality, if we go with the high-pressure laminate, I think you're gonna have a better, longer-lasting, durable product, and, you know, it definitely does, there's some increased cost of that, but I think when you look at, you know, not having to replace them over time, and I do think screws will fasten a little bit better to that MDF as they're screwed together and moved around a little bit, you know, I think that would be my recommendation, but I think ultimately I'd be okay in any of these lines.
Okay, so that would be like the second choice or the lower cost?
That'd be Option Three.
Oh, option?
Option Three with the thicker laminate.
Okay, that's the, so it's the highest?
Yes.
Okay, so remind me, because I just remembered the middle was 1,200.
1,625.
1,625, and then what's the lowest?
999.
Okay.
And one includes freight and the other does not. Is that correct?
HBC has freight, but that cost is included within that 999, but just know if that is the option we went with, moving forward, all products from that line will have a freight cost included. Global does not, it's just part of the overall.
Is there an estimate of what we would be looking at for freight?
No, so to clarify, I think all three of these in that pricing has freight included.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Global just includes it as a standard package, like when they put their list price down, it includes freight. HBC does not include freight when they quote it, but freight has been added into that 999 that is in there.
Okay.
So the pricing you're looking at includes a freight estimate for all three of them.
Okay, because it says no in our
It's a little bit misleading, I understand where you're coming from with that, but
Okay.
it's basically saying no additional freight to be included in that.
So we're being recommended to go with Option Three?
That's what it sounds like.
You know, the one thing that stands out to me a little bit is you look at these tables, for example, they're, you know, set up, taken down, set up, taken down, and they're actually in pretty good condition overall. The people who will be sitting at these desks likely will not be turning over very much. It's not a high turnover-type position, so I would argue they'd be probably a little more diligent on how they use the desks. I do see your point with respect to the screws and stuff like that. I guess the question is, do they come loose because of disassembly and assembly, or do they come loose just over time because people are leaning against them and pushing up against them and those kinds of things?
I think the answer to that's a little bit of both, you know, I think as you kind of sit on a desk or lean on it, you know, over time they do, they do wear and get a little bit looser, you know, and to your point, Commissioner Matari would, you know, say that the substrate is the same for Global Option Two and Global Option Three, so, you know, that, going in that MDF substrate that is a little bit stronger, I think will help the longevity of that too, so.
So coming into it, I was willing to look at Option Two, just to make sure that the longevity, you know, the furniture doesn't wear out before the building wears out. I mean, it will, but
What is the lifespan average?
That's a great question. I mean, because manufacturers vary, you know, some people only have their product for five years and they're ready to change, add or move, and then, or it could be 10 years, or 15, or 20, so it really, I think, depends actually on the client, because these manufacturers have been around for a very long time, longer than 20 years.
So you've been around enough job sites to have seen what goes and what doesn't go? Can you tell me what you've seen and observed?
Over time for longevity or over just product? I would say customers are about on a 15- to 20-year turnover on product like that, yeah. And it kind of, it also depends on the industry, the trend as well, like the financial industry, they're on a quicker turnaround because they're on trends with their clients and people, versus here at the county, we're not trending. We're trying to provide a durable, long-term solution that's going to last, you know, at least probably, I would assume, 30 years, 40 years. That's our mentality, and trying to find the right products for this facility.
Okay, so what about the hardware? What, how does the longevity of the hardware?
The hardware is not the problem. I think to Jeff's point, it's going to be more about what the
As long as it's, and as long as it's, if it's halfway decent, it's okay, but there's a lot of hardware out there that I wouldn't even tow home in a junkyard truck, so, you know what?
Well, yeah, and my husband's the same way. He's very My guy, my guy will say, "Not that, don't go there," so I get that point, but not at your level. However, you know, we only align ourselves with manufacturers that we trust.
Can you name some?
I'm sorry?
Can you name some that I might know?
Yes, so manufacturers of furniture is Herman Miller and Knoll, those are two great big brands, but they are not the right furniture for this facility. We also work with JSI too, I mean, I could go on, we're a house of brands essentially, and so what we've done is taken all of our brands and trying to find the right solution to meet the needs of the county and what we think is best long-term value. So that's what we've done, but we are truly a house of brands, so.
What kind of warranty do you have?
Us on our labor and parts, or?
Yes.
It depends on, it depends on the product. So some of our manufacturers have a 12-year, three-shift warranty where it's very defined, and it could be on fabric where it's only defined for two years or five years, or a mechanical part, like a height adjustable desk, could be a two or a five-year on that mechanics. So it varies on the product and it varies
On the manufacturer.
on the manufacturer as well.
Is that what we would be receiving on this?
This is that lifetime warranty.
Pardon?
This is, for all three of these products, it's a lifetime.
Okay.
So it's not defined.
So how well is your, is your warranty? Because some, sometimes it's pie in the sky and oh darn it, it's out of stock. So how, how would you look at it that way?
I would say, you know, if you are having issues with your products, let's just take the desks, for example, I do not see an issue of an issue with your desk. I just truly don't unless somebody is coming up and trying to sit on it every day or being very aggressive with the drawers that are in the desk. So sometimes that becomes a user issue, but give us a call on that fifth year, that sixth year, that seventh year, we're going to take care of the county at the end of the day, and we're going to go back to the manufacturer and say, "Your product is failing," so we do have our own internal warranty and repair specialist that works with the client, with Tori, and with the manufacturer to make it right for the client if something is starting to fail.
I think we might have a winner over here.
What are you thinking?
Out of the three choices?
Which one do you want to do?
A thousand bucks, 1,200 bucks, or 1,600 bucks?
What do, I'd probably do right in the middle.
Yeah, I think the question for me is just, I don't have a problem spending more, you know, but the value has to exceed that, that price difference, you know, and so we're reliant upon you because this is your business, not our business.
Right.
And the samples are limited as far as what we can really look at, touch, get a sense of. So where is your head with this as far as value, quality? Commissioner Eberline brings up a good point. I mean, if the hardware isn't that good and it's very low quality, then that's probably reflective of the rest of the product to some degree.
Right, right.
So
And I think, Tori, you spoke with our lead installer about
I did.
about the, how it goes, how it's assembled.
How it's assembled, yeah. I mean, it's, on the specifics of how it's assembled, yeah, it's a cam and lock assembly. So the hardware is actually similar throughout all three options. Again, it's just that substrate that's going to be the difference in how things hold up and how it takes those screws. So the particle board's going to be less dense compared to that MDF, where MDF is going to hold a screw better. So that middle option does have MDF with a thermally fused, so right there you're already exceeding probably the longevity of the basic option.
I think the key point is their, is their warranty, and we've already, we've, they've said, "Well, they'll warranty this stuff," so. I think that's a good thing.
I'm okay with Option Two.
Okay. And I think that's the direction.
Incidentally, just for your information coming up the next time, which I've had to say this, the exact same thing in prior boards. This is, this is thermally fused stuff, it's vermicah, but it's only very, very, very thin, very thin.
Mm-hmm.
And the others, the other stuff is a, is a, just a, it's, it's just stuff that just comes out, and it's, and it's not very strong. If you get this kind of stuff, you're going to get good service.
Well, it's good to know.
Yeah.
So I think you have direction, and then I guess I would just ask on color. Do we just pick a color per floor? Do
We will likely work with the designers, the design team that has been designing all the color palette through the architect, to look at the color samples and make a recommendation on that, so we'll probably bring a recommended color based off of the designers and their design expertise as well.
Okay, because I just don't want 24 colors throughout the building.
We don't want that either.
Yeah, no, we would, we would, well, we likely actually just have one concept color throughout.
We have all of the interior finishes from the architect, so we have enough to hopefully make one selection
Yeah.
for our desks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
If that's it, thank you very much, and we'll move on to Item Two.
Okay.
Facilities update, and we have jail pod expansion, jail generator project, and the admin HVAC, and Director Fuller.
Okay, again, Jeff Fuller for the record. I'm just going to update you on a couple of the other projects we have going on in the county. With the jail pod expansion project, Sletton is preparing to mobilize for construction start of April 1st, and they plan to be here late next week to walk the project, the project with their key trade partners, just to make sure they have all their ducks in a row. Long lead line, long lead items have been ordered, and we just received notice from the City of Coeur d'Alene yesterday, actually, in fact, that the permit is ready to be picked up, so good news that the permit is in line. A little bit of good news there that we are under budget by about $36,000 on the permit from what we estimated in our budget on that, so that will actually help offset some of the costs that we're going to consider this afternoon
Side v.
with the change order, because as you know, there is a change order coming because the City of Coeur d'Alene required us to do a bunch of additional site work in an area where we're not doing the construction with the curbs to bring those up to ADA compliance, and so that change order is on your business meeting for formal approval this afternoon, and we can talk a little bit more about that, but we'll be looking for your approval on that, and that was about $50,000, so as you can see, this $36,000 in savings will significantly help offset those costs and the additional unforeseen's that we had there. Any questions about the jail pod project?
Questions? No questions? Okay.
Okay. The jail generator and transfer switch is another project that we've been working on. We received the 100% drawings from the design architect on that, and the RFB goes out for bid tomorrow with a bid opening date of March 25th, so we will have that coming in a couple of weeks for you. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about was the admin HVAC project that we received the bids on last Tuesday. As you know, when we opened the bids, we just received the one bid from Dardan Construction. I was a little bit surprised that we just received one bid because we had six different contractors that were looking at it, and was definitely surprised to just receive the one. It was over budget. We have $2 million allocated for that project, the overall project budget, and that included the design fees, so we have about $280,000 in design fees that we've already committed, so realistically that puts us about $400,000 over budget on that project. Before I bring a formal recommendation to you, I want to just kind of pause and take a hard look at that project and see, you know, are there options? Why do we feel like it came in at that price? You know, the ROMs that we were working with from the architect and engineer were around a 1.1 to 1.3, so we're definitely significantly higher than that, and I talked to them briefly about that. I think part of it is electrical costs were quite a bit higher, and we knew we were going to be asking for some evening and weekend work, but I think that scared a lot of contractors off from actually submitting their bids. I did talk to a couple contractors that did not submit to find out why, and that was part of it. So I want to rethink that, and I'm trying to meet with a couple mechanical contractors to say, you know, "Look, when we open the ceiling up, how long would it take you to run the electrical to that one unit, and is there a way that we can work this where we just displace one or two staff for a couple of days and we can kind of rotate around and try to recreate this where maybe we have more daytime work, you know, during regular business hours rather than that evening and weekend work?" So I'm trying to kind of re-strategize this and rethink about some options to see if we can bring the cost down and find any additional value engineering before we bring a formal recommendation to you, but, you know, there's a strong likelihood we may suggest, you know, rejecting that bid and going out for a rebid with some new design specs and sequencing to it. So want to make sure we're doing the best we can for the county, and, you know, I think it's the right time to take a quick pause on that and make sure we do this right, so I'll be bringing more information back to you, but I kind of wanted to let you know what I'm working on in the meantime before we bring a recommendation.
Excellent. Any questions, comments? All right. Thank you. That concludes Item Two. Next up is Item Three, First Quarter 2025 Quarterly Financial Statement. I have Kyle Westerman giving us the presentation.
Good morning Commissioners, Kyle Westerman for the record. We're going to go over the first quarter quarterly with you guys. So on page one, we'll start. This is kind of the overview of all the elected officials and where they stand year-to-date as of 1231. The B-budget for the BOCC and the Clerk are a little bit above 25%, which is kind of where we expected, but the BOCC, that's incorporated in the first payment of ICREM, so you kind of expect it to be above, and then same with the B-budget for the Clerk, there's a bunch of scheduled annual subscriptions that happen in the first quarter, so it's expected to be that high right now. Let me move on, kind of goes into, next page is going into depth on like department-by-department within those elected officials, but we'll go over those a little bit more on the hot sheet. On page 20, we're going to look at the revenue for property taxes collected so far. We got our trending right where we expect to be with about 52% of our levy property taxes collected as of 1231, which is right on track. And then on page 27, we have our additional revenue, which is like our interest in our state revenue sharing, the sales tax. As of 1231, we hadn't received our first payment for the state revenue sharing or the state sales tax. We received them, it usually comes about the beginning of February, like the first or second. So I pulled those numbers this morning. We are trending right on track for those with 25.5% of our budget collected for the state revenue sharing, and then 25.7% of our budget collected for the state sales tax. And then also, this shows our interest, and then our investments are trending down right now, so we are showing an unrealized loss. The interest and the, and the gain or loss gets netted at the end of the year, so kind of hoping for that to turn around a little bit for the market, but that's out of our control. And then on the next page, we'll go over the hot sheet on page 28. The big one on this first page, I think I wanted to highlight, was the airport's unbudgeted expenses for that 9754. They have come before the board and got a budget adjustment for that, so it's, it's covered at this point. And then on the next page, there's two I wanted to point out, the letter N and the letter O. So letter N is the maintenance for sheriff. So letter N is the maintenance for Sheriff. The vehicle and equipment maintenance and supplies accounts are, they're 92% and 105% spent. I don't necessarily know if that means they're stockpiling, you know, oil and stuff for the vehicles or not, but they are, you know, approached their budget or exceeded it for those line items. And then letter O is jail operations. I think there's been discussions about this before, but the jail medical is either exceeding their budget or it's expected to exceed their budget. Those are two big items for departments I wanted to go over with and have any questions.
And that's a comparison quarterly, not annual, as far as what was budgeted and where they are?
Well, we're looking at it as an annual budget.
Okay.
So.
So they've exceeded their annual budget and by the first quarter?
For, yeah.
Okay.
For the medication line item, and then like the jail medicals. Jail medical itself is at 48% spent for the, for the whole year, but obviously, if they're almost 50% spent by the end of the first quarter, they're, they're trending much higher than what we expected.
Yeah, anything on, anything on the hot sheet is going to be above 32% for the first quarter. So that's, yeah, that's what lands them on the hot sheet.
Yeah, we don't start flagging things until they start getting 32%. We build in a little bit of, a little bit of wiggle room over that 25% for a little bit of timing differences, but, yeah. So if the over 32% gets flagged.
Any questions, comments?
Comment, jail medical was $400,000 underfunded when we started our fiscal year October 1st. So that's just, we have to keep an eye on and figure that out.
Mm-hmm. Commissioner Everline? No? Okay. Well, thank you. Okay, next up is item four, an executive session, but I'm going to go ahead and call for public comment first.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Hartman for the record. I stepped out to ask Jeff, the furniture you selected, where it's manufactured? It's manufactured in Canada. I'd request you find an equivalent product that's manufactured in America.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay. We'll move on to item four, executive session. I'll take a motion.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to IDO code 742061F.
Second.
Commissioner Everline?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matari?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye.[543.16]